To order this city council meeting for the Coon Rapids City Council for Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, and we'll start with the pledge this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with an update, add two items in the Proclamations and Presentations section, a Poppy Day proclamation for the American Legion Post 334 in auxiliary, and a Poppy Day proclamation for VFW Post 9625 in auxiliary.
Second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Geisler and a second by Griscoviac. Mr. Brody or Ms. Lenzmeyer, item eight, since Mr. Quinn is not going to be here tonight, should we strike that from the agenda then? Mr. Brody.
Your Honor, given that it's a hearing, I'd ask when we get to it, we just make a formal motion to continue it until June 3rd, I believe, which is our first meeting in June.
Okay, so, okay, so leave it on the agenda. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the adjusted agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we added a couple proclamations for Poppy Days and... I've got upside down. Here we go. Oh, it went off. Hang on. Okay, so we've added two proclamations for, to recognize Poppy Days. And because the wording is the same, but it's for two organizations, we're just going to go ahead and read, read at one time. Whereas the Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334 and auxiliary, along with the Coon Rapids Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9625 and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary, have adopted the poppy as their commemorative symbol. And whereas the memorial poppy assembled by disabled veterans pays respectful tribute to those killed in war and also benefits the living veterans and their families. And whereas, public donations for poppies find, I'm sorry, fund rehabilitation programs within each local community that benefit veterans, their families, and ultimately our state and nation. And whereas, the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2020 to be Poppy Day, urging all citizens of Coon Rapids to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously and to wear a poppy as moot evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens, proclaim this 5th day of May, 2020. I don't, they're actually, they're not going to be out distributing poppies this year, are they? I, I think that might have been on the one sheet that I didn't print, and I don't have it here.
Ms. Mayor, Councilmember, that is correct. They will not be able to be distributing them, but if things open up, they plan to try and out at a later time, but they'll advertise when that will be.
Okay. All right, so next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion by Wells, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. We have just one item on our consent agenda this evening. And that's to accept a right-of-entry agreement with Centra North LLC. Per its development agreement with Centra Homes, the city is required to construct public streets and utility infrastructure within Port Riverwalk. The property has been transferred to Centra Homes, but the final plat for Port Riverwalk 2nd Edition has not yet been recorded at Anoka County. To allow access to the site for Phase 2 construction activities in locations that will soon be publicly dedicated on the plat, the attached right-of-entry agreement is needed for the city and its contractor to continue construction of the public streets and utilities under Projects 19-12A and 19-12B. So we'll be looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Central North LLC for construction activities at Port Riverwalk. And that's our entire consent agenda. Your Honor. Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by Kicker, second by Johnson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We have three items under our bid openings and contract awards. The first one is to consider Resolutions 20-1/9 and 20-1/12, awarding a contract and adopting assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 20-1. And this is, you know, this includes 16 streets proposed for reconstruction. And Mr. Hammer, anything you want to, anything unusual about this, or anything you want to cover on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no, nothing unusual. We had some good competitive bids. It looks like it's saving us a little money. Construction keeps going, so we did have a couple of contested assessments. We followed up with those property owners. And I guess I would be recommending a word of contract to Northdale Construction, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, but yeah, very competitive bidding. Engineer's estimate was about almost $600,000 higher. That's nice. All right.
Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-1/9, awarding a contract to Northdale Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $4,429,782.13, and a motion to adopt Resolution 20-1/12, adopting the assessments for Project 20-1.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Next is to consider Resolutions 20-2/9 and 20-2/12, awarding the contract and adopting assessments for Minnesota State Aid Street Reconstruction Project 20-2. And this is for five streets, and it's only five, so I can just go through. Riverdale Drive from West City Limits with Anoka to Northdale Boulevard, Northdale Boulevard from Riverdale Drive to Round Lake Boulevard, Crooked Lake Boulevard from Gladiola Street to approximately 500 feet north of Northdale, Crooked Lake Boulevard Service Road from 121st Avenue to 119th Avenue, and 113th Avenue from Coon Rapids Boulevard to Crooked Lake Boulevard. And, yeah. Competitive bids again. We like it. Anything on this project, Mr. Hammer?
No, Mr. Mayor, council, pretty much the same standard thing. Some sidewalk segments being filled in. We finally get to reconstruct Riverdale Drive. That will be happening and tie in nicely with the city of Anoka. Primarily state aid projects here. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That, that's, that street is so bad up there. Councilmember Demmer.
Yeah, so I see that if council awards a contract, work can begin in mid-May and be completed by mid-October. This was one that we were just sort of wondering about. Is there any way to either get it done as fast as possible on the Riverdale side? Or just the worry that as more of those businesses open up, suddenly we're going to put a bunch of construction in front of them? And, and are we, are we making any adjustments based on that?
Councilmember Demmer, council, we just had our pre-construction meeting the end of last week. It's tentative that this segment, Riverdale Drive, wouldn't happen until later because water main is included in the other two projects. And so they'll want to start on that. I think they were talking here somewhere in July or August. There is no good time, quite frankly. But that, that was later on the schedule than the other projects for this.
And I assume there'll still be plenty of ways in and out of the shopping center. It's just the, we're not going to like close the shopping center.
That's correct. If you recall, it's, it's going to be reconstructed exactly the way it is now. So without having to do the staging for roundabouts and other things, it will be open to, to traffic at all times.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Hammer? All right, somebody want to make a motion on this one? Item four?
I can do that.
Councilmember Demmer.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-2/9, awarding a contract to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC in the amount of $4,109,591.99, and move to adopt Resolution Number 20-2/12, adopting the assessments for Project 20-2.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? She beat you by that much, Bill. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Just a clarification for Mr. Hammer on this. Even though we're not doing the roundabout out in that area, we are, we are improving turn lanes and access through there to some degree, aren't we?
Councilmember Griscoviac, council, we will be adding a southbound right turn lane into approximately the Cub and adding a sidewalk connection on Northdale over to Round Lake Boulevard as well as on Riverdale Drive connecting over to the city of Anoka. There's, there's no additional widening or turn lanes proposed other than one into that business.
Okay, and then the other thing that Councilmember Demmer already touched on, but being that there's no water main work on this one, this project, well, will progress fairly rapidly, I would suggest, to his point about closing these businesses down.
Yes, that is correct. We'll have a few hydrants and valves, but no massive water main work to be done. And we're also replacing and upgrading all the lighting in there as well with LED. That'll happen after the fact, so it's just spot replacement, grind and go. Should be a fairly easy project to do.
Grind and go. Okay, thank you.
I like that. Turn and burn. Yeah.
Mill and overlay, grind and go.
There you go. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And then item five. Item five is to consider an emergency mill and overlay repairs on Avacet Street, Project 20-11. And, um, let's see, so let's see. This segment of Avacet was originally constructed in the early 2000s. Seal coating was performed in 2010 and 2017. Excessive stripping of the last chip seal layer has led to numerous shallow potholes over the past couple of years along the entire roadway segment. That is no surprise to anybody that drives that road. So this is a, this is a nice deal. And I, again, just like Xavier Street, what a, what a bargain, you know, to, to get that road all redone for, in this case, $146,000. Anything you want to, anything you want to say about this from Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, as we've talked before with some of the roadway maintenance projects, we're going away from the seal coat. We, we started to notice some of those concerns. So we actually had some dollars left in our maintenance program, very much so like last year as we started to pull back. Now is the good time, always in the beginning of the year. These are all the contractors that have contracts with us already, or two more that were added tonight. So there, all the utility work happens first. So the paving contractors at this time of the year are usually sitting around twiddling their thumbs waiting. So you get them early, you get an early project, you get it going. They're more than happy to get in and get it done quickly. So no curbs, no utilities, no nothing. This one is even more of a grind and go than the last one. But yes, it is great, great numbers that we received. We'll, we'll be looking to do maybe more of these in the future as we reevaluate our fog sealing, chip sealing program.
Yeah. Councilmember Demmer.
Yeah, so I, I do think it's really good that in the situation where the road really didn't last as long as people would have hoped, that we're not doing an assessment, I, I think that's the right move. But I do have a little bit of a worry because I know that a lot of roads had that seal coating that were done in that timeframe. So I'm, I'm just sort of curious, have you done any sort of comprehensive analysis to see how many roads are going to fall apart in the next three to four years? And are we going to not assess those owners as well? I, I ask partially because I've seen quite a few other roads that I know were done in that 2000, 2005 timeframe that have a lot of potholes under the chip seal layer. So I, I just don't know what, what we're on the hook for here.
Yeah, Councilmember Demmer, when we do this evaluation, we're really looking at our collector roadways, those with higher volumes. So while yes, you're ending up with similar results on maybe less side streets, local streets, they don't deteriorate quite as fast because of, of the volumes that are on it. It, it's not perfect, that's for sure. I, I certainly understand that. We're trying to handle those more so with our crews, but those shallow potholes don't last so long. And when you're really looking at these high-volume collector roads, that's even more so the case. So we haven't really looked at everything as it's going to relate to all of these chip seals. We just know that now we're going away from those chip seals, going more to the fog seal, more to the crack sealing component. And we can handle in-house the patching on these types of roadways that don't have quite the volume and, and are less travel, less people, less cars than trying to put crews out in the middle of, say, Avacet, Crooked Lake Boulevard, Zavis, those types of streets. So I certainly understand your concern, and that's why we're adjusting as we go on our maintenance program. And there'll be more to talk about that as in the future years as technology changes as well.
And do you, do you have a feel for how many more of those large collectors might have been done in this timeframe? It looks like you've already patched this one twice. So I'd assume that if there was another one that was done in the same timeframe that was going to be a problem, you would have already patched that one at least once by now.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Demmer, council, we've also looked at several other roads. But because the budget isn't quite there to make them all whole, when we talk budget here next week and as we go into the future, we'll be looking at doing our maintenance a little bit differently and maybe doing some thin mills, some ability to maybe do something better on those other projects that you had previously mentioned. As I said, though, it's, it's not perfect right now. We're just trying to find ways to be more creative with, with our maintenance dollars, and we'll see where that takes us.
Okay.
All right. So we don't have a motion on this. Councilmember Kicker, this is kind of your ward there. You think we should move with this, or?
Absolutely. Yes, I do. In fact, if you like, I'd like to make the motion that the council adopt Resolution 20-11/9, awarding a contract to T.A. Schiffsky &amp; Sons, Inc. in the amount of $1,46,665.50 for an emergency improvement by milling overlay to Avacet Street from 450 feet north of Main Street, county-state aid Highway 14 to 133rd Avenue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kicker, second by Johnson. Discussion? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Griscoviac.
A couple of things. I think that if we can get eight to 10 years out of this project, I think that gets us closer to the historical full-depth reclamation that we typically see in the city, so I'm okay with that. I did drive on Xavier Street earlier today. That's similar that we did, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but that's performing very well. My question for Mr. Hammer is, how, how long is this stretch of road? It's got to be close to a mile if we're going from Main Street all the way to 133rd. Do we know? I mean, it seems like we're getting a pretty good value, actually, for 146,000 miles. I was wondering exactly how many feet and how wide.
Councilmember Griscoviac, I don't have that information, but as we go through the agenda, I will definitely give you the answer before we're done.
All right, because I mean, $146,000 for this fairly long stretch versus we just approved almost $2 million per mile of full depth, full-depth reclamation, plus some water main work. So again, it seems like a pretty good value. We just got to make sure it lasts the 10 years, eight to 10 years.
And, and I'll add on the Xavier Street that you had just mentioned, we're going to be in doing crack sealing on that because, you know, the, the cracks propagate back through these, these milling overlays. And so right away, we're going to get back on handling the cracks for that water intrusion and some of the other problems that that creates. So this will follow in same suit. So next year, you'll see the crack sealing happening.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We don't have any old business. We're on to new business. And item six is to consider resolutions designating additional municipal state aid street designations. The city has a lot of municipal state aid funds each year for construction and maintenance of the city's MSA street system. MSA funds are generated from the state gas tax and allocated to all eligible cities based upon population, roadway designations, and corresponding traffic volumes and general estimated costs of future maintenance. Each city is allowed to designate up to 20% of its total street mileage as MSA streets. Coon Rapids has three and a quarter miles available for MSA designation, which will allow the city to receive an increase in its annual allotment. And what we're proposing to add here are 111th Avenue Northwest from Mississippi Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard, that's right by the Community College, 115th Avenue, Raven Street to Hanson Boulevard. That would be right by the Coon Rapids Middle School. Raven Street, 115th Avenue, Northdale Boulevard, the other section of that. Direct River Drive, Mississippi Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard, and Flintwood Street, 121st Avenue to Main Street. The proposed roadway is total 1.92 miles of new MSA designation. Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Hammer?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's good. We talked about it in work session, but I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, anybody have any questions on this, or anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Couple, couple of questions. Making sure that Raven Street, it has that 90-degree curve, so that somehow fits with the MSA standard. And then the other part of the question is, we, we all were kind of concerned about some of the parking impacts when we're turning streets into MSA. Is there any parking impacts that we should know about or the residents should know about by doing this?
Yeah, Councilmember Griscoviac, council, just by this designation, there are no impacts. Any impacts that may occur would come at a future construction period of time, then if we don't meet standards at that time. But I believe all of these would remain as is. We may have to look at either restricting or doing bump outs on one side of Flintwood and potentially Direct River Drive in the future.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
I can take it.
Thank you. Councilmember Demmer.
This looks like a fun one. All right. Move to adopt Resolutions Number 20-44, Designating 111th Avenue Northwest from Mississippi Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard as a municipal state aid street. Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-45, Designating 115th Avenue Northwest from Raven Street to Hanson Boulevard as a municipal state aid street. Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-46, Designating Direct River Drive from Mississippi Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard as municipal state aid street. Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-47, Designating Flintwood Street from 121st Avenue to Main Street, county-state, state aid Highway 14 as municipal state aid street. And move to adopt Resolution Number 20-48, Designating Raven Street from 115th Avenue to Northdale Boulevard as municipal state aid street.
I'll second all five of those motions.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. A nicely done, Councilmember Demmer, when those couple of words were cut off.
They're trying to trick me.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're on to item seven. Oops, come on. Which is to consider an introduction of ordinances for code revisions related to Civil Service Commission. As was discussed at, at a Jan, January 14th City Council Work Session, the primary purpose of the Civil Service Commission is to have control and supervision over the employment promotion, discharge, and suspension of all officers and employees of the police and fire departments as provided by law. The current primary functions of the Civil Service Commission are interviewing police and fire candidates and certifying the eligibility roster for sworn positions. City staff recommends amending city code to abolish the Civil Service Commission oversight of police department employment while retaining a fire civil service commission. Staff believes that removing Civil Service Commission oversight from the police department will help improve the recruitment process when hiring police officers. Human resources would oversee the entire hiring and promotional processes, ensuring equal employment opportunity and adherence to all applicable state and federal laws. Mr. Stemwell or Mr. Brody, anybody else want to cover anything else on that? Or do you think that covers it? Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, council, I'll just mention a couple other things that summarizes it very well. I will just note, staff has had conversations with the two labor groups that would be affected by this, our police officer and our police sergeant groups, and, and their understanding of the decision here, or at least a proposed decision to repeal this. A lot of what benefit was provided by Civil Service Commissions in the past has been duplicated in other places, whether that's through a collective bargaining agreement, state and federal law, and so forth. And, and therefore, we, we think it'd be more efficient and effective in the long run to repeal the police commission, police side of the commission, as you mentioned. Staff did investigate the possibility of repealing the Civil Service Commission altogether, but statute doesn't allow for a city after so many years to repeal the fire portion of a Civil Service Commission. So essentially, what this will do is repeal the Civil Service Commission and reestablish a fire civil service commission in our city code.
All right. So anybody have any questions? This is just an introduction, so we don't need a motion. But before I introduce it, I want to make sure that nobody has any questions on it. All right.
Mr. Mayor. I'll just.
That's, go ahead, Councilmember Griscoviac.
Just a clarification, what, what our city administrator just stated and what the memo state are a little bit different in the fact that the memo says it's going to abolish the Civil Service Commission or police department employment while retaining fire, but this actually will abolish Civil Service Commission oversight of police department altogether, including, up to and including discharge and suspension of officers. So is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Currently, they oversee, in theory, all portions of that. In practice, what they're, what they've administered over the years is the hiring process. There haven't been situations in my tenure, I think well before that, where they've considered any sort of disciplinary or termination portions because typically, a police officer would choose their collective bargaining route, which would include grievance and arbitration process. And they have to choose that over the Civil Service Commission. So as far as I can understand, that has never occurred. But that too would be included in the removal. But both components would remain in the fireside, both the hiring and ultimately the potential for that termination or discipline oversight.
Okay, and then to follow.
Okay, and then to follow up then, in the event that some of our residents or any of our residents do feel that a, a suspension or something like that is in order in the police, they still have the representation through the city council and the mayor and, and all that to, uh, to put those, uh, concerns forward, correct?
Councilmember Guskowiac, that's correct. And actually, currently, if there was a complaint regarding a police officer, they would file that first with our police chief. Um, and they would conduct an investigation, ultimately a decision about any sort of discipline would come to the city manager and that person would make a decision about that. Only under the circumstance where that decision is appealed by the employee would it go to the civil service commission. So even today, if there was a complaint against one of our officers, that body wouldn't be the body to investigate it until a discipline's been handed down. And the only purview they would have in that situation is to consider whether or not the discipline against that employee was warranted or not.
You're muted, Brad.
Oh, I said, thanks for the clarification. That'll do it for my questions. Appreciate it. Thanks for letting me know I was muted.
All right, uh, so with that then, we will consider the ordinance amending city codes three dash one zero one, three dash one zero two and three dash one zero four related to the Civil Service Commission introduced. And we're on to item eight, which is to consider, uh, an appeal of decision of the Board of Adjustment Appeals, Thomas Quinn, one zero four ninety-four Winter Green Street. And Mr. Brody, what do you like us to do here? We're going to set this aside until June third?
Your Honor, I would just ask that we continue this to June third, our June third meeting, uh, Mr. Quinn asked that request based on the fact that we're having a Zoom meeting. He doesn't believe he has the technology to participate. Um, I don't have any reason not to believe him. We were gonna figure out a way, one way or the other, whether we're meeting in purpose, in person, or whether we do something like we're gonna do for the Board of, uh, for the properties in a couple of weeks, but we're gonna find a way to accommodate Mr. Quinn. So, cause we do wanna bring some resolution or bring a resolution to this matter for both the city and Mr. Quinn. So we're just asking, make a motion to continue it until June third. And we'll hear it at that time.
That's right. Councilmember Geisler?
I, I can take that and, and our meeting is Tuesday, June second, so.
Sorry, thank you.
Motion to, um, continue this to the date certain of Tuesday, June second, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that issue is continued. Um, do we have anybody here for open mic this evening? No, okay. Okay. Uh, all right. And, uh, we have one report from a previous open mic. And that was, um, so we have a, a response for Mr. Nelson, uh, ten thirty-three ninety-third Avenue spoke at the open mic. Um, he was inquiring about the city's plan to fund proposed construction projects and expressed concerns about the city's noise ordinance and enforcement, particularly along Truck Highway six ten. Uh, the city is currently applying for a couple of Metropolitan Council Regional Solicitation Grants in an effort to secure funding for a couple of priority projects in the community. And these grants are future year funding mechanisms for a significant portion of the project costs. No city dollars have been committed to these projects at this time. And future conversations and financial, financial planning will need to occur in advance of project initiation to identify a complete funding package, including local funding options. Anoka County has already secured federal funding for the Foley Boulevard to overpass, overpass project, which is scheduled to begin in twenty twenty-one, and the work associated with a potential full interchange at Highway six ten and East River Road is not funded, but the city is pursuing funding sources for both design and construction of the project. Uh, with regard to the noise from traffic on Highway six ten, excessive traffic noise from a freeway is not an issue that can be addressed through the enforcement of a noise statute. The primary source of loud freeway noise is the density of traffic, not individually loud vehicles. Uh, whirring tires at freeway speeds in conjunction with the exhaust sounds from trucks, motorcycles and other internal combustion engines moving in a pack creates a lot of sound. The most effective solution is that collective sound is the reduction of speed through enforcement, and the police department is actively engaged in slowing freeway speeds to the posted limit with the ancillary effect being reduced noise. Future roadway expansion in the area may also trigger noise wall requirements, which would help to subdue, subdue the freeway noise. Um, and this was just provided for informational purposes and that was the response, and we are on to other business.
Ah, your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
If we're gonna talk about, uh, whirring tires and exhaust sounds and internal combustion engines, um, I just really had a, a nice time being able to go down and, and watch the, uh, the rolling car show, um. I do know there's, there's people who I could see trying to get to their houses who got stuck on literally the only traffic jam in the entire state of Minnesota. I, I, I do hope that they, um, they don't get too frustrated because it, it, it is really nice for the, um, people in the area to be able to go do something. Um, you know, we walked down there and, and we were able to watch a bunch of cars go by and, and the kids had a good time, so I really glad people put that together. Um, it's been a lot of fun to watch. I, I know a few people are, are probably a little inconvenienced by it and, and, uh, so I, you know, wanna make sure that, that we hear that they're inconvenienced, but, but on the flip side, boy, it's really a, a nice relief to have something to do on, on a Saturday night, so. And I know that there's a lot of businesses that are really appreciative of the number of, uh, cars that have come through and, and bought food and things like that, so. So it was a good event and fun to watch.
Yeah, and I, I can, uh, take on a little bit. You know, on a, a flip side, every call I've gotten has been concern for, you know, on the other end of the Boulevard, there are certain parking lots that get jammed and there are hundreds of people in the parking lots and not really adhering to the spirit of social distancing and non, met, not groups of people that are within that same family. And so I've heard an awful lot of concern from that, and I think, you know, you know, our police chief and, and our police force have, you know, are working to see about how can we help people understand social distancing or physical distance. It's not, you know, do, be social, but be physically distant, um, at the same time to make sure that we can allow this to go on and, and have the, the people go through. So, looks like Chief Wise, you have some comments there?
Chief Wise? Yep.
I got sound. There you go.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on that, is that it's a very difficult predicament for the police department be in, to be in regarding uh, people gathering in parking lots. Um, all of that activity is spontaneous. This event is sponsored by no one. It, it, um, it was created through social media from car clubs and it's all individuals doing it on their own. And the governor's order specifically as it relates to social distancing, uh, talks about education rather than enforcement. And so, um, unless somebody was, saw our officers out there, we tried very hard to hit every group of people to remind them of social distancing. And I think there were photos taken of the officers that were down there and they're doing, they're being officer friendly in that they're just trying to educate per the guidance of the governor's office. So, um, sometimes I think people have the expectation that there'll be some citations handed out regarding social distancing, and that's not the case. It's, it's, the focus is strictly on education. And we're hopeful that people continue to take that social distancing seriously.
Chief Wise? I had, I had a couple, couple folks were concerned about the social distancing. Um, you know, of course, their concern is that those folks are gonna then fill Mercy Hospital and to that I thought, well, a little business would be nice, but, um, my, my bigger concern is, um, i- is the, how late it's been going. You know, it's scheduled till nine. Obviously, it's a public road. They don't really know to just leave then, and, and I guess I'm not even that concerned if they're still out there at ten, but I've got reports of a lot of noise still out there, close to midnight, and I'm just wondering. Um, and, and then the other one was, um, some folks that live right by Crooked Lake Boulevard, and they said every time the light's red, it's an automatic drag race right away. Well, it's probably a little bit of, uh, an embellishment, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure that's happened. And, and then the other thing is, is I went up and I just rode it once on the motorcycle. And this guy, this guy just, he must've been going ninety when he went by me on his motorcycle. Really noisy, and I just thought, gosh, I wish I was in charge of this for just a moment. But I'm just curious, do, do we have officers out there cruising to kind of, kind of help a little bit with the enforcement? Because that's, that's really how this could come apart.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, we're, we have as many officers as we can be part of the action on Coon Rapids Boulevard and to take enforcement when they do see things like uh, racing or burnouts, cause yes, that is happening. The evidence is right there on the asphalt when you see melted rubber, and if the officers see that, they do take aggressive action. Um, but I'll just tell you, the, the city councils that I'm, I'm reluctant to put more staff out there, or in this case authorize overtime expense in an era where we're really concerned about our budget, um, as it relates to this coronavirus and the loss of revenue. So we're really in kind of a tough spot. I'm trying to be efficient with taxpayer money while simultaneously have as many officers as we can be part of the mix to get the event to slow down. Um, truthfully, the best thing that could happen for us is the governor to restrict or to lift some restrictions that allow people to do more social things, such as being in parks or playing basketball or those sorts of things. Um, if those, if those sorts of outdoor activities can be done safely, um, I hope there's an aggressive posture. And, and for instance, the car clubs that show up, um, like I said, it's fueled by social media, so it's basically classic car owners who ordinarily would prefer to be in parking lots that they rope off and they charge a fee and admission in order to make a little bit of money for their car club. I know that that's what they prefer to do, and once those kinds of events are allowed to happen again, I'm certain that that's what will happen. I don't, I don't expect that this will continue beyond. Um, that said is that the, the informal hours listed are three PM to, or excuse me, uh, six PM to nine PM for a three-hour window. And, um, you know, but there's nothing that says that people can't quote, drive for pleasure and quote, after that hour. Um, and the officers will be fo- focused on violations of statute, speeding, burnouts, those sorts of things, but, um, the, the act of being on the road at that hour in a classic car makes it really hard to, to intervene.
Sure. I'll tell you one thing, it's the best the Boulevard has looked in as long as I can remember. They've been going out Sunday mornings and picking up all the, any litter and trash that are out there. So it looks, looks really good.
Well, and actually, Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to add on to that too, because it's, it's sort of a perfect storm for this event in the parking lots in that the businesses um, where the, where people congregate in the parking lots are closed. And ordinarily, in world events, uh, being otherwise, is the businesses will be open and they wouldn't allow cars in their parking lots. But, but any business that's closed that has cars hanging out in their parking lot, it would be an expense to that business owner to come down on a Saturday night and do something about it. And I'm sympathetic that they don't want the hassle, um. But from a law enforcement perspective, we would need a business owner to come down and say, my parking lot is off limits and to put signs up or whatever, some, some, something that would, would aid in our enforcement um, to get them to move on. But it's, it's kind of a perfect storm of it's a good thing and we want it to be safe and lawful and all those sorts of things. But it's, um, it's happening in a, in a window that is different than what anybody has seen before and, and this unfamiliarity, I know, I know has people wondering, well, how long is it gonna last? And will it take on a life form? That makes it undesirable, but I do know the car clubs are the driving force, or the members of the car clubs are the driving force behind this. And they say all the right things. Most of the car clu- car club presidents I've spoken to myself. And they want it to be safe and it's, the Boulevard is clean because the car clubs are organizing cleanup events Sunday morning to make sure that everything is clean. Um, so they wanna do the right thing and, and, um, the reality is, is when they have the ability to have the regular shows back, those car clubs will go about doing those things. And we're, for, for my point of view, and I'm sure to the residents who live along Coon Rapids Boulevard, they'll be anxious for that to happen.
Thank you.
One, one other question, Chief Wise, you know, is it possible, could we, uh, make a suggestion to our Anoka County partners that they potentially have a car patrolling since it is a county road um, on the Saturdays, that to just get a little bit more, you know, from a county perspective, support for this as well? I would, if we could at least look into that, that would be great.
Uh, yeah, Mayor Councilmember Geisler, we've had the state, we've had state troopers out helping us. Um, I don't know if the county sent a car, but we can specifically ask them if they are able to spare some stamina and be a part of it.
So, thank you. I, I, I know that everybody that I've talked to, they're not opposed to the cars driving, it's just the concern for the physical distance of them in the mass gatherings that are showing up in some of these parking lots.
All right, excellent. Any other business to come before council? Mr. Stemwaddle?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I, I thought it'd be worth touching on a, a couple of topics. Um, earlier today, the city announced that, uh, the Fourth of July Carnival uh, for twenty twenty would be canceled, and I know that came as very negative news for a lot of people, and there's a lot of opinions, of course, about whether that was the right decision or not. And I don't begrudge any of those opinions. It's, it's a wonderful event, uh, on our nation's celebration of independence. Uh, but really, as, as I looked at it, as I talked to other partners, um, we, we've worked with a number of organizations to put this event on. The city is just one of those partners. We had to look at it, uh, from a perspective of what's reasonable and what's feasible. And beyond just the public health possibilities of whether or not the event itself is even going to be allowed, certainly events of that magnitude are going to be just about the last thing, if not the last thing that the governor is going to allow. And it sounds like a long ways away, two months away. Uh, but as far as a timeline for planning an event like this, that, that is essentially tomorrow, as far as we're concerned, with the amount of planning that it would take to pull it off, and also the financial commitment that it, that's required to pull an event like this off. Uh, the city, uh, invests lots of money, tens of thousands of dollars, uh, both in terms of safety equipment, personnel, overtime and so forth. Uh, the organizations that participate are volunteer-based. And, uh, you know, to put those folks at risk and to put our police, fire, public work staff at risk, uh, in an event that may or may not happen, and if it did happen, may not be successful. Uh, to me, just wasn't a reasonable choice. And so, uh, that along with a number of other things that are scheduled in that large group setting between now and the middle of July are effectively canceled at this point. We're updating our website and other information still, uh, so you'll start to see some more of those official announcements roll out, but we're talking about things like the summer concert series, summer in the city meetings, uh, safety camp and some other recreational programs. And then my thought is, you know, we hold off for about another month to decide what the second half of summer looks like. Uh, you know, we'd like to wait as long as we can, uh, but knowing that a lot of these things require a lot of buildup, like staffing, organization, volunteer efforts and so forth. And so they don't happen in a vacuum, uh, again. So two months, three months out is, uh, I get where people are coming from that they, they, uh, would like us to hold off to make a decision, but the reality is we had to make it sooner than later. Along, along those same lines, city offices remain closed. At this point, we're preparing for the possibility that City Hall Public Works, uh, could open to the public as soon as May eighteenth, but really that'll depend on the future stay-at-home order that comes down from the governor, if it's adjusted, if it's extended, however that looks like, but physically uh, from a planning effort, we're implementing some things at City Hall and, and other facilities that have that public interaction uh, to increase the safety, to increase social distancing. Um, so we're gonna be ready to go, depending on what our direction is at that point. Uh, and I don't just have all bad news today. I will promise that. A couple of good things I do want to bring up. Uh, Bunker Hills Golf Course has been open for a couple of weeks now. That was one of the recreational things that the governor did allow um, in a modification to one of his executive orders. And, uh, overall, the reception has been great. The course is in great shape. It's been very busy. Uh, we've had to make some decisions about how to, how to manage, uh, things like social distancing. People do wanna linger in the parking lot and things like that. And so, uh, if you can imagine it, our PGA pro, uh, Mr. Tim Anderson is out there having to play bad guy every once in a while. Uh, even though we, we know that he likes to be on the positive side of things to, to shoot people away when he has to. And then just recently, in fact, uh, this morning, the recycling center opened up. Uh, it's been closed since the middle of March, and I know a lot of people have been asking about that. Is there a way we can do this safely in a socially distanced way? And Clean Sinclair to credit came up with a great plan to get that. And Clean Sinclair, to her credit, came up with a great plan to get that center open. Uh, today was the first day. She said it went very smoothly. It was very busy. And she said, and I quote, "I've never seen so many Amazon boxes or Styrofoam in my life than I have today." So obviously, people had a lot of pent-up demand for recyclables. Uh, the plan at this point is to have it open a couple of days a week, I believe Tuesday and Thursday, and Mr. Hammer can correct me if I'm wrong on that. A lot of modifications, a lot of touchless things going on. Uh, you can get more information on our city website. The last thing I'll mention is the, the council will serve in the capacity of the local Board of Appeal and Equalization on Monday, May eleventh, and so property owners would have received a valuation notice in the mail, a proposed value notice in the mail about a week ago. And their first step, if they are interested in appealing that, would be to come to the local Board of Appeal and Equalization. That meeting will be held via Zoom. Uh, but if you have any questions or concerns about logging into technology in order to make that appeal, I would do ask you, call our city assessor's office at seven six three, seven six seven six four four six to ask them questions. A lot of times they're able to answer those questions ahead of time. Um, and if not, we'll provide you an opportunity to speak before the local board of appeal where that's at Zoom, or if need be, we are going to set up conference room three here at City Hall, and we'll socially distance people there again, but they could provide uh for that, that opportunity here at City Hall versus at your home. And that's all for me.
Excellent. Mr. Hammer, was there a correction or something there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council, the recycle center is open Tuesdays and Fridays.
Fridays.
From ten until three PM for the next two weeks, and then we'll reevaluate based upon demand and uh the rules in effect at that time.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, any other business to come before City Council?
Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I'd just like to ask uh, Tim there, how whoops, how things are going on Hanson Boulevard, the stretch between Northdale and Main Street, the construction there. I know the road's open. Is everything on schedule, or is uh this COVID nineteen impacting the scheduling at all?
Uh, the only disruption, Councilmember Griscoviac, if you recall, we're, we're uh not turning people's water off. There is some water main work that has to be completed down uh kind of in the area by Jimmy Johns and such. So we had to forego that work and push further to the north. Uh, that, that will occur as soon as we can, but as far as having less volume on the roads, that's been helpful to to make this go a little bit smoother. But uh, we really gotta get to that water main work completed, and so if there's any delay, that's, that's what it is. They're just ready to go as soon as the ability uh exists.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stemwaddle? You're muted.
One other small thing, that small thing. One other thing to mention, Mayor Council, is we had, we've had a couple of retirements recently. We also have another employee who you all know, Julianne Bacon, who is moving on to a new opportunity in Colorado, so actually uh she's not on the call tonight, but her last day with the city will be Thursday, and she's heading out to Colorado, I think, on Friday right away, so we wish her luck. And then also in Engineering Public Works, Ron Sample, who was uh had worked for the city for multiple decades, forty-two years, something like that, and now is near hoof, who is a multi-decade employee. Um, also recently retired, so just want to wish them all luck in their new endeavors.
Absolutely, all the best. All right. What else we gotta go on, Council, anything?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells?
Uh, if you're not gonna mention the flyover at Mercy uh tomorrow, I I certainly will.
Thank you.
I believe the time is from uh eleven twenty to eleven forty, maybe uh I don't know if we have that on our website or not, but I believe that's the correct time, and uh be a flyover to honor the employees of the hospital, and uh I've seen it on video. It's very impressive, so I look forward to seeing it in person tomorrow. And I believe the fire department will be represented down there as well.
Yeah, Mer- Mercy Hospital, and we're gonna get the two F sixteen's out of Duluth, I guess. And they'll be traveling from south to north over the hospital, and I think that's right, eleven twenty to eleven thirty-five range, something like that, so. And if uh, if if that's not impressive enough, they could go to Mercy Unity Campus in Fridley at about the same time and see the F sixteen's and a C one thirty. We're not getting that one up here. All right. Somebody want to get us out of here? It's really good to see you, see everyone, though, you know?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.
Night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.